Thirty minute meeting?
I'll sit here. Thank you.
Probably not.
All right, we'll go ahead and bring the Davis County Board of Commissioners' meeting to order on August eighth, two thousand twenty-three. I want to welcome everybody this morning. Pastor Tony Franklin from Bethel United Methodist Church in Washington for prayer this morning. Morning.
Would you pray with me? Lord, we thank you so much for the gift of this day, for bringing us together. We pray for your Holy Spirit to bring us your wisdom and guidance as we gather and meet, be in our discussions, be in our plans, and be in the details of all we do. We lift this up in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. All right, we got meeting minutes from July twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth meeting. Any corrections, anything wrong?
I saw none. Not for a motion to approve. Make that motion.
Got a motion from Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we got minutes from a special, special meeting on July the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Any corrections, anything on that wrong?
I saw them then.
If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we got the highway department. Chris? There was no meeting at the highways.
Correct. Just to be short today, I guess on the projects, they're pouring the deck on the bridge today, the Montgomery Bridge. So they're right on schedule. We had said in June, they were going to do the walls, and they did. In July, they, they framed the, the deck and set the beams, set the beams and framed the deck. In August, they were planning on pouring, so that's what they're doing today. It'd probably set for about five days. Then they'll come in in the next week and start framing up the sidewalks, the barrier walls, and in about two weeks, they'll come in and start doing the approach sidewalks and approaches to the bridge. And we did collect the millings off of Two Hundred North. We talked about we were going to do that at the last, the last meeting we had, so that is officially closed. The barricades were up, I think I said that at the last meeting, but the road's actually gone now, so if you go around the barricades, there's
Nowhere to go.
There's, there's nowhere to go. We milled that up and approximately got, I think it was like twelve hundred ton of millings and about twelve hundred ton of rock that we reclaimed for the county, and we put a price tag to it and that give us millings at, I wrote it down. Without claiming any of the rock, that give us millings at seven dollars and thirty cents a, a ton. Basically, the rock for free. If we add them together, it was for all that tonnage, we paid like three dollars and sixty cents a ton for it, so that was a good savings and a other than that, I've got an LPA claim voucher for countywide bridge inspection.
All right, something different.
Something, something different.
Nice to see something doesn't have Locke Mueller on it.
All right, we got an LPA claim voucher here for SJCA in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and sixteen cents. An eighty percent reimbursable, fifty-five thousand, four hundred and four dollars and thirteen cents, and this is for countywide bridge, bridge inspection. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then, I guess the last thing on the side note, we talked about the failure on Kennelburg Road. I got a meeting with Milestone today at ten o'clock. So ever since the failure happened two Saturdays ago, Locke Mueller was the engineering firm on it. They contacted me that, that night that it happened about ten, ten-thirty at night. So I've been in contact with them and got some information from them, and then Milestone has been talking to us too. I was gone last week, so I didn't get to have the meeting with them. But we're going to have a meeting today and kind of get an answer where we're going from here about that failure and the possibility of maybe another failure or two that we need to look into fix or not fix before it happens and
I think we need to be proactive.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Because if he, if he's even hiring them, that was bad enough, but if he was hiring that, it could be a serious injury out there, so.
Yeah, so just let you guys know they've been, they've been real proactive and supportive of figuring out what we can do to fix the problem. That's all I've got.
The problem is either the design or the execution of the design, correct?
Yes.
You got to fall in those two categories, so it shouldn't fall on us.
Right. So I think I got it narrowed down to what the, what the problem is, but we give them a chance to kind of defend it today of, of what they think it is or what they what the design was and what the tolerances were that they were allowed to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda, we got the housing rehab project grant extension for SIDC. Looks like they're wanting to push the projects from August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three to December fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three. Looks like there's several that's been completed, but we got a few outstanding builds out there, so. Any discussion on it, Ron?
Looks like the same issues and for getting supplies or contractors and everybody's struggling with the same thing, so I have no problem with the extension.
Okay. If not, look for a motion to approve the extension for SIDC on this their current project for the OOR program.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next line is the semi, semi-annual recipient report, Washington Township Fire Department. This is also Southern Indiana Development Corporation. Anything on that, Ron?
No, I think it's something they do every year for the
Just report back to the commissioner.
Five-year period, so this is part of that initial grant funding, so.
If no other discussion on that, look for a motion to approve the semi-annual report for SIDC for Washington Township.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we got help from Davis County United Development. Amber?
Morning. Just slipped my page real quick. So my name is Amber Warden. I am the Davis County Community Coordinator for the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program, also known as HELP. It is a program that was overseen by OKRA, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. I was tasked with going out to our community, engaging with them in different ways, informing them of what HELP was last year, and receiving feedback as to what they would like to see this HELP program move forward with in terms of projects and programs for our county. Last year, the county requested to be part of this program. It was chosen as one of twelve counties in the state of Indiana to, to do this program. In doing so, they committed nearly two million dollars for this program alone that earmarked, earmarked it. And also in doing so, the state earmarked an additional one million of CDPG grant money for this. So today, I'm here asking for the adoption of the Strategic Investment Plan. Sorry, it's a mouthful. Along with that, we have four projects and programs listed out here. These projects derive from those community engagement results that were then taken to pathway committees. They discussed them, chose the ones that were most viable, useful, and doable for our county. These grant, or these projects include a beautification and wayfinding project. This is to add signage to our entryways in townships in the city of Washington, just throughout the county. It also allows for the addition of trees, flowers, plants, things like that, also art projects throughout the county. It's open to all the townships and the city of Washington. The next is a sidewalks and trails project. This project, again, allows for any township in Davis County to utilize this project. If they have a current project that pertains to sidewalks or trails that they are currently working on, that can be used for this. They can come to me. I will go to them if they do not reach out to me first, and we will coordinate that together and, and move forward with that. Once we have come together with each of the townships and the city of Washington, I will then speak to them on what their projects, the scope of their project will be. We will then come to the county asking for funding from the earmarked amount that we had set aside in the beginning. If the county denies that funding, the township will then be responsible. So this Strategic Investment Plan in no way binds the county to be financially responsible for these projects. It does just, it just opens up kind of a more unified project for the county as a whole. The last two projects that are mentioned are a multi-use center project and a business grant project. These grants were asked for by the citizens of Davis County, but due to the scope of the first two projects I mentioned, those being so large, also including the current projects we have going on in Davis County outside of HELP, the county has deemed it most necessary to do the first two projects first and then possibly revisit those last two projects at a later date. So today, I'm here asking for the adoption of the Strategic Investment Plan to move forward with these projects. We cannot move forward until the adoption is complete. Have any questions?
I sat in on the first couple meetings related to HELP, and I thought it was the Commons project was going to be part of that request.
Right. The Commons, the Commons was brought up a few times, but the constituents, the pathway committees that we had organized together had deemed that that was not one that we needed to add in for this, as it was already ongoing, and HELP program was designed to create new projects for our county.
Well, I, I have no problem with approving, approving the plan. We're not tied to any of the funding just yet, and if we decide not to, then we just don't get the state funding.
That's right.
So based on that, I have no problem with approving the plan. I do have an issue, however, because I was told on the Commons project when they asked for our funding that there would be money from HELP.
Right.
So now I, I need somebody to explain that Commons project to me on how it's being funded and
Right.
what our commitment is.
The county's got a big commitment already.
Right, and that was based on HELP, HELP having money in that, so.
So the two projects you got right now is beautification and wayfinding project, and then the safe sidewalks and trails, that's the two you got right now.
The focus projects, yeah.
Both of those are good projects.
Trails on, we're in dire need of trails in this.
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt the plan.
Hey, I got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, Scott Myers, we got Indiana Department of Homeland Security grant.
Good morning. We have an opportunity with the Indiana Department of Homeland Security Grant to purchase new radios for our law enforcement officers in the county. This grant only will purchase radios for law enforcement. It won't allow for fire, EMS, or anybody else, so.
These are the eight hundred megahertz?
These are the eight hundred megahertz, which is what the state and federal agencies use, so to have interoperability. It, it's different from what we in the county use on a different, on a daily basis, so it's kind of a necessity to be able to talk to the other agencies. So we currently have some radios in the county. They're about ten, well, they're twelve to fifteen years old Motorola radios. Motorola no longer supports them because of their age, and so we need to start replacing those. Plus, the state's going to what they call a phase two, which will disable all these old radios when they go into the new system. So at some point, everybody will have to buy new radios that purchased them a while back, so. This, this is a hundred percent reimbursable grant through Homeland Security.
And it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Yes.
More questions, Ron, on that?
No. Pretty straightforward.
Yep, it's pretty straightforward. Something we do, we need.
Yes.
So if not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
AM Guard documents.
Yep. See those here? All right, we got AM Guard documents service department. Gary? I'll see. Now here it is. I guess that's it there.
I think that is, we actually took care of that last week.
Yeah, it looks like everything's signed.
We had it signed, but I think we just needed to do it in a public meeting.
Okay, prove it.
Signed last week, so.
Okay. Just want to speak on, real, real quick?
Pardon?
You want to speak on the AM Guard real quick?
That's what I'm about.
Okay.
Basically, what this is doing, it's just for the disposal of the vehicle that was in the accident, so this is just the insurance paperwork for us to take care of it, so we just wanted it in the record.
Okay, yep.
And then, yeah, they'll take the old Durango from there, but I think it was at the council meeting, I said we were having problems with insurance, and some people thought that was with Paul Williams. It wasn't with Paul or anything, because they worked very hard on, on getting this
Getting resolved, yeah.
Get it resolved. It was the other end where the issues were.
Okay. Well, this is AM Guard for two thousand sixteen SUV Durango, it looks like, and just everything to finalize that transaction, right?
Right.
Look for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Gary. Hi, Lauren. We got the ANX Boundaries Commissioner order.
Yes, as you know, I talked to you in January about doing the Buffalo Trace line, adding that to the voting area, and I got everything signed by you guys. I sent the annexation to both the GIS mapping people and to the Election Division, and they got their maps back and they didn't match, but then we were at a deadline, and fortunately, I couldn't start it till January first, and then the, the deadline was January thirty-first, so the Election Division said, well, our map trumps, and so we get our map. But it doesn't match the annexation, and it needs to be fixed correctly. So I had to wait till the primary election was over, and now I'm working on getting it fixed, and it won't actually take effect until after the November election. So it'll be ready for next year, but I just wanted to go ahead and get a head start on it. And I showed you both maps. The one with the yellow line shows the boundary of Washington, and the one that they did has a whole other section down here that actually is not part of Washington. That needs to be all removed, so that it's correct. And Grant actually noticed an error in the order, so we'll get that fixed for you to sign if you approve it.
And go ahead and approve it pending that change.
Okay. Does you have anything wrong on that?
Nope.
All right, let's, I'll, look for a motion to approve pending the, the
Revision.
Revision of it.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we got the courthouse renovation update. Ladies?
Good morning. So we just wanted to give you an update on the renovation activities just to kind of roll through some of these items. I sent out a kind of a matrix of just some decisions and approvals that we needed. And Laura, do you want to kind of provide an update on those items?
Sure. So one of the first items we had was the courtroom design. We did get approval on seven twenty-six to move forward with the design as stated. However, I am meeting again today to discuss viewpoints and things in the courtroom that were
Three D.
Yeah, that were some additional concerns, so we are meeting again today. So pending, no changes on that. We're considering the eight twenty-six a completed design, or seven twenty-six a completed design, which would put us completed with, with courtroom design by eight sixteen, so next week.
And today, we're basically just using our three D modeling program, Revit, to allow the judges to kind of sit behind the desk and look out and make sure that, yeah, make sure that they're okay with sight lines and things like that.
We're actually able to put in their eye height though, for each judge, so they'll be able to see from their angle what they will be actually seeing in the room.
Yeah.
We also talked about roof replacement. We were delayed on getting a core sample, but we did get that on seven nineteen. And we got a direction from a roofing I think, vendor, yes, for replacement on that on seven twenty-seven, so we're looking at adding that into the design. We should be wrapping that up this week. We were looking
Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. I thought you had a question. We were looking for direction on the first floor restrooms. We talked about reducing that scope of work. There was some questions on our engineers' end on how that would work with some other, the other work that we're doing. I think we did get final direction on how we can make that work. So we're adding that into our design right now. Relocation plans, we issued it out in email. I have them here too for the final review. We informally, we're setting this off on seven twenty-eight, but looking for final approval today to just seal the deal. With this, as mentioned in our email, this would require some additional services. We're looking at some electrical work, design, as well as, since we're adding a wall, we're looking at some sprinkler relocations, minor, minor, but some have to be shifted a little bit.
Sprinklers never minor.
We have to shift about eight heads, I think, because it has to be a certain distance from the wall, and to make that wall work.
Just change the heads out? Or not?
We'll look into it, but
The only reason I ask that, because down here in this corner, when this thing was designed, they actually built the sprinkler. I don't know if you've ever seen it, down there, that sprinkler that's built into the wall just about. And it passed inspection. If you look in this room right down here, behind this stairwell, you'll see it.
Okay. Well, we'll consider it and look and see what the best direction is.
If we could just change the sprinkle head so it's spraying the other way?
Yeah, we'll see what we can do with the throw of the water. See what we can achieve through that.
Start tearing that main line out, that's going to get expensive in a hurry.
Yeah, no, I don't think that we're planning on tearing, tearing out any main, any main lines. There's two that are going in that rim that we're looking at, and it was more of a shift of one of them away from the wall, but I think that we'll look at reducing that scale.
If we just do that, like these up here are all flex hoses and does a flex hose get it somewhere else? Change the head out or whatever. I would prefer that instead of trying to move a trunk or something.
Okay. Yeah, oh, absolutely.
I will say that our, our scope of work is very heavily electrical, more so than anything else. There's quite a bit of design work on the electrical side that we're going to have to work through. A little bit of mechanical, a little bit of plumbing, and a little bit of architecture, but not much anywhere else. They're very similar to what you've seen. I just kind of adjusted for it to, to work with the departments to make, see how that would work. So as you can see, we are planning on leaving the existing cages in the basement and kind of working around them. You'll see where that new wall's located to separate the clerk space from the court staff. This plan would be putting Judge Sabecki's court in the Sheriff's Department area, which was given access to us by the Sheriff's Department, so they would be using the training room, a soft interview room for an office, and another open space for his staff. So him and all of his staff would be over there. That would leave Judge Smith's court here.
Here, use this room and
This room. That would be a hearing room mainly for small claims court cases. Did talk to the judges about sharing these spaces. They were both on board with that. They're good with what we've proposed here. This would allow the probation to take up one side of the basement you see in blue. We would provide one of those offices as a meeting space for them to, since they're going to be in an open workspace, they really need to have some private meeting spaces, so we've provided that. As well as one of the caged areas in that lower right-hand corner as a meeting space as well. They're okay with keeping all of the, well, they're, they're okay with the two other areas remaining storage, whether it be what's in there now or other storage that's coming over from the courthouse. We've also found a place for election storage, which could be locked up, so we've worked with Lauren on that as well. And then the final piece of the puzzle would be on the second floor of this building. We've assigned, I believe, what's the mapping room and a couple of other meeting spaces to the prosecutor's office, so they would be moving, ready, nothing done there.
All right. I know there was a concern for two spaces upstairs. I sent an email back out. They've talked about that yet.
That's just sharing space.
Just sharing spaces.
I think mapping talked about
Don't need those meetings.
Appeals or property taxes and the space that they would need.
Yeah. So I didn't know if, if that email got anywhere else.
There was a response that just said people are going to have to share, essentially.
Okay.
I mean, we'll just work through the practical difficulties, but I know that mapping did have a concern about their property tax appeals and having space to hear those.
Okay.
So I mean, I know, everybody's, it's going to be a crunch for everybody. If we have to either do these after hours or before hours or something like that, we may, you know, everything's commissioners and councils might have to do the same thing. I just, we're going to have to adjust our schedule too, so.
We don't have a lot of those appeals, but
If we do, we just have to work around schedules, just like the commissioners and council have to do for this room too.
I was going to say, do you have a, something in, in process that you can schedule the rooms and things like that? That was asked in one of our meetings.
Yeah, we're going to have to, I mean, it's, it's definitely going to have to happen. We've got more than just two meeting rooms in this building. There's more. We got one room down the hall here, and there's other places to have a meeting, so. We just have to work out schedules with everybody.
And then Laura, you've, you've been working with the Sheriff's Department on security or that we're covered in that respect here as well as you knew.
Gary, are you going to have, is your staff going to come from the courthouse over here and secure this building then? Okay, yeah. Yep, okay.
We did place on this plan, we did place, have a placeholder for what the the detection machine, bringing it over, security checkpoint over in this area as well. So we're able to fit that there. So we did provide additional services. Did you guys get that, Amber? Not provided.
Additional services.
It was in my, it was in my email.
That means.
And so that's just an amendment to our contract, which includes relocation design fees. Like I said, most of it's electrical.
Yep.
Relocation design and just the practical practical steps that are going to have to take place.
Yeah, so we are looking at, Garmon would like to see this issued as a separate bid package, so we're doing a bid package for just the relocation, so that we can get that out the door and get it started while we're finishing up design for the rest of the building. And that way, there's hopefully a smooth transition to get people back in here that work can be taking place at the same time. So with that being said, our timeline did shift a little bit. We are expecting to have our relocation bid package out pending this approval at Um, so with that being said, our timeline did shift a little bit. We are expecting to have our relocation bid package out pending this approval, um, at the eight twenty-two date.
Okay.
Yeah, if we don't, if we need to get anything over there, I mean, cause they're up and functioning, so.
Well, this is to put the bid package together?
Bid package together and then the electrical downstairs. And then the design and laying it out. I'm sure they got time in it too.
You're bidding out relocation services. This is the.
Laura, do you just want to speak on what, what this change is, this change order, just?
Yeah.
The scope of work, I should say.
Yeah, so we, uh, so beforehand, we were putting out one bid package. We're putting out one, um, document to bid, which would be specifications and our drawings and everything would be in one bid package. Relocation bill, bidding was never part of that. Um, we talked about using it schematically and helping figure out what the county needed, but we couldn't really quantify what that was until we determined, determined where you guys were going to be. Um, obviously if you were renting a move-in ready area, there wouldn't really be any design needed for that. Um, given the fact that we need electrical work and minor mechanical and plumbing engineering done, um, here and we're adding a wall here, there would be additional services that would include that. We would separate that in a separate bid package and put it out to bid prior to the rest of the building being bid out. And the reason for that is so that they can start on the construction of the relocation, get that complete, move people out, and then we can start on that building.
I understand that better now. I, I would ask, you, you mentioned one bid package and there may be a need, just based on where initial estimates have come in, there may be a need to break it into pieces.
Well, we've got.
So we have some alternates built in already.
Okay, and that's not going to be an increase in fee for, for you all?
The alternates are already included.
They're already included.
Yeah, the alternates are already included and a lot of the alternates is site work, I believe. Um, a lot of the exterior stuff that we're looking is, is broken out to be like that. So I would say as long as it's not a significant change in design. I mean, if we're looking at redesigning something, that wouldn't be part of it, but if it's a part of the alternates that are already included, then yeah.
And you can break the, the big picture into, to smaller pieces as needed and that's not a big deal?
Yeah, we've, what we've done is in the process, along with Garmong, we've identified areas to break out. And they're called add alternates, so that we already have, Garmong has them separated out in their price and so we'll do one bid, but we'll ask for a, a separate price on the, that list of alternates from the contractors, so that then you can make a decision when bids come in if you want to keep that or if you decide to not build that particular portion of the project.
Anything else, Grant? Ronnie, you got anything else on that?
The facilities we looked at would be ready to move into. The lease payment on those would have been about a month and a half of what that costed. And we're talking about having these building twelve to eighteen months, so it's cost effective to do this. The only thing I'd say on that is it's a flat eleven thousand dollars, I think. Is that a not to exceed eleven thousand or just a flat eleven?
It's just a flat eleven. We, we worked up how many hours we believe it's going to take.
And what if you work less?
I'll tell you what, if we work less, well, we will, we will give you a refund or not charge. It can be on a not to exceed.
I like, I like not to exceed packages.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's, that's fair.
I got Rebecca's, you know, yesterday on Sunday, so she's, she's working all the time.
We don't pay double time because she chose to work on Sunday. I appreciate it.
That, everything you know, the updates.
Well, let's see.
All the updates.
Yeah, keep going.
Oh, you, it's your turn.
It's my turn, okay. So I sent out, um, some furniture proposals to you yesterday.
Yes.
And we have, uh, two firms that have been identified. Um, our QAW has worked with both firms. Um, and both firms, uh, do participate in the OmniA program, which if you choose to do that, is a, basically a purchasing co-op. That will allow you to get furniture at a discount level, um, if you choose to do that. You would, you would need to be the person that's responsible for buying, purchasing that, not the interior firm. Um, and they can, both of you kind of have a conversation with you about that option in depth. You don't need to make that choice at this time. Um, but we do have two proposals and I've got hard copies if you would like them. Um, so McGee Design House and, um, Relocation Strategies. Um, the proposals for the furniture include the assessment and inventory of your existing furniture. They can help you decide what needs to go in the move and what you might want to consider, you know, uh, replacing with new furniture. So I, I think this, I read through them. I think they're, they're very similar. Um, the prices are close together. One is, I think, thirty-eight, one fifty, and the other one is forty-two. So you're within close range there. I also, I, I like to ask for, um, references of folks that have, you know, worked with these firms in a similar capacity to what you guys are, the services that you're looking for. Um, and interestingly enough, when I read through these, they, they reference, uh, the same, use the same reference for, they both, both firms worked on the, I think it was about a seven hundred million dollar Marion County, the, um, justice campus there. Big job. I think it'd be interesting if you want a reference to maybe talk to that person, Jennifer Tilly, and just talk to her about what her experience was, if you feel like that's necessary in making this decision. Now, Re- Relocation Strategies has also included a move management cost. They've isolated that and that total cost would be fifty-two thousand. Um, it includes, I believe, um, uh, temporary move management of furniture into this building, as well as move management into your final renovated courthouse. Yeah, and if, if you're interested in that, I can also ask McGee Design House to, uh, give you a proposal for their services as well.
I think the commissioners are going to have to get a special meeting to.
Yeah.
Figure this out.
Dig into it.
You know, we, like I said, we're trying to get the, we know the numbers are getting really tight, so we just got to earn money wisely and, uh, so we think we need to have a special meeting here sometime. How, how fast we need to get these contracts back together on this? I know it's, it's going to slow the timeframe down a movement over here, but.
Yeah, well, so the furniture, you know, doesn't need to arrive until towards the end of the project, so that affords you some time. Now, if you want help with your temporary move management, then I would say we need to get that really quickly.
And, and as for, are you talking about our additional?
No, no, but then also on that, you said the Omni.
Um, yeah, Omni.
Co-op, Omni?
Yes.
Do we have to go out for bid if we, if we use that co-op or still have to go for bid on the furniture package? How does that work?
Um, to be honest with you, I am not the person to give you particulars on that, so.
I didn't know if that was like a.
I know that they have a program that they have identified that municipalities participate in, so you're eligible for that.
We buy equipment sometimes if we buy it through a state sponsor. Thing we, we don't, don't have to go for bid, so I didn't have that OmniA.
Um, I, I, I wish I had more information, but I, I can get that information.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think probably need to get all three commissioners and, and get it advertised with Jen and, and Grant.
Have another meeting.
To have a special meeting to go through this, uh.
When do you want to have it?
As soon as possible.
In a week?
As long as we're all.
One week, because you'll have another commissioners meeting in the following.
Yeah, so it needs to be faster than the second end of the month. As fast as we can get it. We'll have to reach out to Nathan and make sure we're all on the same page on the schedule. And, uh, try to get that done for relocation and then, uh.
Just a couple of other things on my list.
One, one second. So do you want me to ask McGee to give you a move management proposal as well?
I don't think it would hurt if we.
Okay, alright.
Get that information back to us before this meeting. We're going to, a special meeting we're going to have. Yeah, that'll work.
You thinking one week?
I think a week or less. As fast as we can get it.
So like nine AM next Tuesday or eight AM next Tuesday?
Whatever it is, yeah.
Any conflicts that you can think of?
Is this space available next Tuesday?
Can they, can they be there? Is that something that they're? You all can be here next Tuesday?
I don't think we need them, do we?
If they send us the information, we may not need them.
Okay.
You guys have just sent us the information from both those companies, I think.
You're saying for approval, whatever they.
I think if they give us the, the numbers, we could figure it out from there.
If we can attend virtually, we'll do that.
Okay.
Helpful to you.
That'd be probably more, a little more helpful for you guys.
I can be here either way, I mean.
Okay.
We'll let you know.
Okay.
Um, the only other things on my list is, uh, we are still waiting for hazardous waste, um, survey to be given to us, so that, that, um, was done. Um, I think it, it ends July and we are told that we should be getting the results of that back within this week. Pending that, that might add changes to the design, but we don't know until we.
Right, know what's in there.
Yeah, and then.
That's the firm out of Evansville.
I think so, yeah. Garmong, um, facilitated that.
Okay.
Um, and then also the survey, which is being done today, we saw, so, um, hoping to get a quick turnaround on that. Site design, we've got about four to six weeks after we receive the survey for does, site design to report on that.
I spoke with Dennis Hounds and he agreed to move it up, so he said he'd get right on it.
Okay.
I told him the next day, but he couldn't accommodate that.
Next day.
Well, they're out there today, so.
About forty-eight hours then. Those guys do a good, they do good work and work does.
Alright.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. We do have a AI document here for, uh, architect slump sum fee increased by eleven thousand dollars to help the owners redesign the basement of this annex, build out and then all the design work to get it in place. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ronnie, you got anything else?
I don't.
Anybody else in the audience have anything? If not, look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims and adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day. Appreciate it.